Good evening. Today is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. I am Heather Peffley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's February 23rd, 2021 special meeting being conducted remotely, where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council chambers, will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels 189 and 190 and available at manistetv.org. City Council and city staff will have video and audio available for this meeting. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the City Council, the City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zelinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniat.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Deputy Clerk.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
I believe that is everyone. Roll call complete.
Thank you. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It's very important that those giving comments have good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background, such as television, and all forms of audio should be muted. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll move on to the next person in line. The meeting discussion topics for those who don't have an agenda are: consideration of engaging in Michigan Municipal League to conduct a recruitment process to identify the next City Manager. We'll now take public comments, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Heather?
Okay. If you are calling in as public comment, you can press star nine to raise your hand to let me know you do have a comment to make. I will go through everyone, but if I miss you, again, press star nine, and you will press star six to unmute yourself. Okay, I have telephone number ending in 4137. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, Heather. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address.
Chris Schultz at 502 Second Street, Manistee, Michigan.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm strongly opposed to paying the Michigan Municipal League $17,000 to find a replacement for our City Manager. For starters, I believe we could find a suitable replacement far cheaper if we do the recruitment ourselves. From what I've been able to find, our county appears to have over a 5% unemployment rate. So it seems likely we can find candidates who live nearby, possibly within our own struggling community, candidates who understand the needs of our residents far better than outsiders who have not grown up here nor shared our hardships. There's another reason I am opposed to contracting with the MML. I believe their organization to be extremely politically biased and highly doubt they will give anyone right of center any consideration, despite the fact that about 68% of our county voted Republican in person on November 3rd, 2020, and about 47% voted Republican via absentee ballot. I fear this organization will filter out potential candidates through their political lens. Why do I fear this? Because I went to the MML's website to find out more about them. On their top navigation bar is a link titled "Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion." The problem with that is they're talking about George Floyd's murder at the hands of police under support for the Black Lives Matter movement. I presume, since this is coming from the Board of Directors, it means anyone who doesn't believe or disagrees with that wouldn't even be considered as a candidate. But most of our constituents don't agree with any of it. I've talked to a lot of them, and I'm very convinced most folks I speak to believe that George Floyd died of a drug overdose, and they also believe that Black Lives Matter is a domestic terrorist organization which is responsible for the deaths of many of our nation's citizens, the destruction of billions of dollars of property, as well as the desecration of our nation's heroes in history. And yet, the MML promotes the narrative in which black and brown people are being systematically oppressed and murdered by white people, which we do not agree with. If our city contracts the MML to find a replacement for our City Manager, I fear they will choose someone antifical to our values and way of life. I fear this will be one of many future hostile agents they plant into our government who work hand-in-hand with our media-run state and international finance as they continue to bypass our Bill of Rights. I do not believe such agents will represent the interests of our residents nor have any desire to do so. At best, I believe they will view us as backwards hicks lacking enlightenment who cannot be trusted to govern themselves. More likely, I fear that they will view us as political enemies who need to be disenfranchised for the greater good. I ask this council, therefore, to please not hire this organization, which I fear will subvert the right of the people of our city to rule themselves. Instead, I ask you to stand with your constituents and reaffirm the government of the people, by the people, and for the people has not perished on the earth. Members of the council, I thank you for your time.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak, please press star nine, and I will call on you. I can run through the list real quick. We have telephone number ending in 2470. If you'd like to make a comment, please press star six to unmute yourself.
No comment.
Thank you. Telephone number 2403. If you have a comment, press star six.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is John Helge. I live at 450 Seer Street in Manistee. I'm calling tonight to provide support for the City Council's decision to engage with the Michigan Municipal League to help identify and recruit a new City Manager. I was inspired to participate tonight in response to an anonymous note that was discovered this morning in the Little Free Library near the City Marina. This note made the accusation that the Michigan Municipal League was a politically active, radical, right-wing, or left-wing organization that would filter candidates through their political lens and that conservative Republican candidates would not be considered. The note specifically and misleadingly referenced the equity, diversity, and inclusion page on the League's website as representing the sole source of the League's mission. The note also indicated that this search process would be a means for our City Council to bypass the wishes of the voters and impose an openly hostile government upon them. As a citizen of Manistee, I am disappointed others in this city feel driven to resort to this cowardly method of spreading misinformation about the Michigan Municipal League and our city government. The fact that this note even exists tells me that we all have a lot more work to do in this city to overcome the politics of fear and work together for the good of all the people. Thank you for your time.
Telephone number 6210. If you have a comment, please press star six. If there's anyone else, I think I've got everyone. If there's anybody else who would like to make a comment, please press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
Could I say something? I'm sorry, I didn't dial in. I went in through Zoom.
Absolutely, yes. Please state your name and address.
Bruce Allen, 74 Pine Street. I'd just like to say two things. First, I'm sorry we're meeting to talk about Thad's replacement. I think Thad has been a terrific City Manager. Manistee is very well-served, and a lot of the good things happening have got his fingerprints on them. Secondly, I'm very glad you're considering the Municipal League. They're the go-to source of information for good governance in Michigan. Good choice. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
If anyone else who has joined us through the link not calling in would like to unmute and make a comment, please do so now. Hearing none, Mayor. I believe we're all set with public comments.
Thank you. Before we get into unfinished business, I see we have Kathy from the Michigan Municipal League here. I wondered if you would be so kind as to kind of give us an overview of your program and answer any questions council may have.
I would be glad to, and thank you so much for inviting me. This is not the first time I have addressed City Council from Manistee. Those of you who were not on the council when our friend, Mr. Taylor, arrived haven't had a chance to work with me. But I was the recruiter or the facilitator that worked with the City of Manistee when Thad was selected. And I have a great deal of affection for Manistee, and Thad and I have talked a number of times since his selection, and I'm just thrilled with the progress and the exciting things that have happened in Manistee in the last six years and the things that are still on the table for you. We've already given you just a ton of paper, and I don't want to bore you to death. I know that's something that can easily happen to council in the middle of in presentations. I know you have a brochure from us. You actually have a pretty detailed written proposal. And I think you've recently received handouts from a PowerPoint that we could go through. But what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, is just hit a couple of high points on that handout, that PowerPoint handout that you likely have, and then just have some time for questions and conversation. Otherwise, I'm afraid it becomes the Kathy Grinzinger Show, right? As I've mentioned, I want to thank you for considering us and letting us come and talk with you. These meetings are not all that easy. You know us. You know the League. We're a nonpartisan statewide association. We're actually one of the oldest state associations of our kind. We formed in 1899, and we've been in the search business since about 98. So we've done hundreds of searches. We don't compete with the private sector. We only do them for local governments. And in the last five years or so, we've done somewhere between 50 and 75. And I think on the last page of the proposal that you received from us is a long list of folks, and you can check there. And we've worked with several, besides you, several of your neighbors. In fact, just a few months ago, we finished with the folks in Elk Rapids to the north. We are... I'm sorry, was there a question? Oh, okay. Could be a feedback on my end. We have five or four facilitators that are working with us right now. We do our very best to match the facilitators to a community so that there is an understanding, a similarity in history, and a real desire from that facilitator to tackle some of the issues the community is facing. And we work very hard to make sure that matches as close as we can. We understand, too, that this is one of the most important things you will do, not just this year, but probably the whole time you're on the council. Because the relationship between you and the City Manager, just like the relationship that has existed between you and Thad, is the groundwork for either all the success that comes to you in the future or difficulties and fissures and confusion. And because we are the League, we're not going anywhere. So if we work with you and get this wrong, you know where to find us, and we take a great deal of responsibility for what we hope will be your prosperous future. If you do decide to go with the League, you will either be working with me or with Glenn Anderson. We have three other proposals that are out right now pending. So we're trying to, as I said, jockey those that do end up choosing us and making sure we have the best match. Glenn Anderson has been a village manager and a city manager. He's got about 38 years in the business. He last was the City Manager, I hope I'm right here, in Hancock, and has a really good background in building downtowns. He's really strong in economic development, has some understanding of partnering with Native Americans, as do I. I am the former City Manager of Mount Pleasant, which has a lot of those same attributes. One of the things, of course, that none of us can replicate is Manistee's location. So I don't have anybody in my stable except one former Luddington City Commissioner who has served on Great Lakes. So we're working... We're keeping our fingers crossed that we can bring you the very best match. I wanted to walk you through some of the parts of the search because I know there's a lot of detail in that proposal. But one of the things that we do differently from just about anybody else in the business, including those people that concentrate on mostly governments, is we try to work with all of the input factors together and draw consensus in the very beginning, in real time. So we're not going to hand you out surveys to fill out and talk about the most important qualities. We're not going to interview you individually. We like to meet with you and the staff separately, but in full groups, so that we can have you tell us and come to agreement in the very beginning of this discussion what you believe as a group are the biggest challenges and the biggest assets of your community. So you can agree as a group in what the skill set is you're looking for, what the education and minimum requirements of your new City Manager is. And probably most uniquely and a bit more difficult is the kind of personality, the kind of human being that you want to work with. You know, what are the characteristics this person should have? What does their communication style look like? You know, what kind of person do you want to have a professional marriage with that you hope lasts for a number of years? Because we think that fit is probably a much more condition of success than background and skill set. And we like to do all that work upfront and get agreement, get a consensus, because we want to do that before we even go out and look for an individual so that those discussions are held long before you have to vote on who your favorite person is. So we'll spend a bit of time with the council or commission and time with the staff. From that information, we draw or put together a profile that dictates everything we do from this time forward. It'll dictate the kind of brochure that we put together to market Manistee, where and how we advertise, what kind of agencies we look for. It will identify the parameters and the thermometer that we use to select people. We use the things that you said are the most important as the checklist of who the appropriate candidates are. We make no decisions on our own. We come into this without any biases, and we let you tell us what the score sheet should look like. Once that happens, we will take in all of the resumes and the cover letters and the application packets on your behalf. We do that first because we can offer confidentiality to candidates. And City Manager candidates are one of those unique professions where you can actually lose your job just for looking for a job. So you get a better class of candidates when you can guarantee them that their application is held confidential. The League is very well-known, not only in the state of Michigan, but nationally as a recruiter. And so people out there, candidates, trust us, and they trust our process. We've been doing it for a very long time, as I mentioned earlier. We will score all those applicants on your behalf using only the score sheet that you've told us about. And also uniquely, or unique to us, we do a lot of screening at that first phase. We will interview all of the candidates that look like they meet your requirements. We will interview them personally. Often, right now, it's on Zoom or by phone, but we will talk to each of them most qualified. We check references at that stage in the process. We do social media and online searches to try to get rid of anybody that's carrying some embarrassment or baggage that we don't want to show up in a public meeting. And then we will bring you a bulleted profile into a closed session of all of those people that meet your requirements. We're just going to give you our notes on those interviews and the reference checks and the online searches. And from that, you will choose who to interview. Once you make that choice, we'll handle the invitations. We will handle scheduling those interviews. We will put together a list of questions for you to consider based on the profiles that we draw up with you. We'll keep you in the loop all the way through the process, sending communication to our point person at City Hall. We'll be with you on interview day. We'll help you make a conditional offer of employment, and we'll work with your City Attorney to make sure that the new person and City Council have an idea about how to negotiate contracts. That's sort of the steps. And you can also follow those steps in the proposal itself, if you want to dig through that. But I think maybe it works best now if I just close this part of the discussion and leave it up to y'all to ask me whatever questions come to mind.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any council members that have questions for Kathy?
This is Nick Schamanski. Kathy, what would be the process for somebody from Manistee, a local candidate, to apply for this position?
They would be considered along with everybody else. And in the first iteration, the first time that you look at the whole list of candidates, you will get a spreadsheet that, on the top, an Excel spreadsheet that lists all the things you wanted. And on the side, all the candidates will be identified only by number in your first phase of review. That's done to make sure that you cannot ever be accused of bias or discrimination of making a decision on who to interview based on their gender or their race, their ethnic background, their last name, or where they came from. You won't know the city. As the process moves through and you need to gather more and more information, you will gain a greater detail in those candidates. But everyone, whether they're local or from Florida, in your first glance at them, you won't know who they are. But we accept and accept applications from anyone within the county, from Michigan. What I will tell you is that all of our searches right now are national, and almost half of our applicants come from outside of the state of Michigan.
Anybody else with any questions?
Yeah, Bachmann here. So Kathy, following up on Nick's comment there, if we had candidates or if we wanted to maybe list a preference for a local candidate, would we just put that in our profile?
You could. I will tell you that that may have a chilling effect on your pool.
Okay.
If it's pretty clear to the folks outside in the world that you have a preference for a local candidate, a lot of people are not going to take a risk. So you want to think that through, and that's something we can talk about in great detail during the profile process. City Managers are a bit of a different breed today than they were 15 years ago, 20 years ago. City Managers no longer are interested in doing a lot of job hopping. Small communities always ask me, you know, are we going to be a stepping stone? People don't like to do that. Most City Managers who have partners have two professionals in the family, and bopping around every couple of years isn't good for anybody's career. So they will do a lot of homework before they ever apply. The best candidates that will apply to Manistee will, before they send in their resume, will already have watched your meetings online. They will have read numbers of newspaper articles about you. They will have pulled up your meetings. They will have already checked your budget. If they know any other managers in the area, they will already have called them because they are not going to risk a good thing where they might be for something that's a difficult risk. So you really want to think that through and have a discussion, a long discussion, with your facilitator. If you have an internal candidate, I don't necessarily ever mention that in the profile, in the marketing piece, but applicants will always ask, and I always tell people the truth. So if you know you have an internal candidate, that's something you want to tell the facilitator so they're prepared for that and can work that through. One of the... One of the things you'll find, Mr. Bachman, and I like your background, by the way, looks like that plow is going to take off the back of your head, though.
Well, it's still in my driveway, it was snow right now.
Okay, well, good. I lived on a curve. So my, that my drivers used to take great glee in figuring out who was going to bury me that particular snowfall. I lost where I was going.
We lost track, but I think I understand the answer. Thank you.
Anybody else? No other questions?
I have a question. Would it be possible, it's not unusual for upper management people or middle management people to write their own job descriptions? Mr. Taylor, do you have an updated job description?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Would it be possible for us to have a copy of that? In order to more thoughtfully provide input to the MML?
Absolutely.
I will tell you too, that I don't include job descriptions in the profile. Because basically, city managers do whatever city councils hope for.
Well, this is great, because I asked the city manager for a copy of his job description. So there you go.
Yeah, and that's the very simplest of a city manager's job description. Do whatever council tells you to do.
I think it helps, it's like an outline.
I think it's good for you to have that. You may also want to check your charter. Sometimes charters have specific bookends. I have come into communities where charters have had very specific requirements for degrees or types of degrees. And then I have worked in communities that have, where the charter says nothing, except for the fact that they're the chief administrative officer. So I, yeah, I think having a job description is a good prep for profiling. And I don't know, Thad, I haven't checked your charter to see if it has any requirements.
Our charter does have some requirements. Yeah, it's, it's elaborated on in a city ordinance.
Okay, well, there you go.
Anybody else have any questions?
Over the years, so it's, it's helpful to know currently what his job description is.
Kathy, i- is it possible for you, if, if we hire MML, to provide us with a comprehensive list of what other cities are paying their city manager salary and compensation packages? So we would all have that?
What a great question. That's something I missed in my rambling presentation. That's part of our service. We will provide for you, if you decide to hire us right off the bat, a, a list of comps, of comparables from a survey that we do every year. And I will encourage you to take a look at that and to take a look at the market. Things are changing. And so, yeah, we'll get that to you right off the bat.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
May I just one last comment? I, as a executive working for Minnesota, I've worked with the MML many, many times over the years, both in training and conferences and in, in fact, in city manager searches. I have found it to be very responsible, very professional, and I am very pleased to have them available to us to work with.
And I would certainly be willing to answer any questions you might have. If you have any other concerns or things you'd like to be able to assure your constituents about.
I would just like to say that I was on city council when we hired Mr. Taylor and worked with MML. It's, it's a very good process. I felt very comfortable at the end, making the decision that I made. But I'll, I'll tell council, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a good process, but it's a hard process. It requires a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of thought.
It's grueling, isn't it, Mr. Zaleski?
Yes, it is. I will, I will not, I'll not disagree there for one minute. Anybody else have any questions?
It is nice to see you again, sir.
Nice to see you. Anybody else, any questions, concerns? I don't hear any, Kathy. Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Continue your wonderful work.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Consideration of engaging with the Michigan Municipal League to conduct a recruitment process to identify the next city manager. Michigan Municipal League, MML, through their executive search services, assist communities with the recruitment process to identify their next city manager. The MML is willing to assist the city in this process. The cost for their assistance is seventeen thousand dollars. This item was tabled at the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one council meeting for consideration at tonight's special council meeting. There is a motion on the table to approve contracting with the MML in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars to assist the city in a recruitment process to identify the next city manager. It authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the necessary documents. There was a motion, motion was made by Bachman and seconded by Gabowski. We're now into the discussion process. Is there any more discussion before we take a vote?
I would just like to make some comments. I was not on council. You were the only one, Roger, that was on council.
Yes.
That wasn't your choice when you voted. But I would like to point out that one of the things that concerned me about the process going through it before was that social media did get, you know, they knew who all the candidates were. And there was a lot of chatter on social media. There were things that were discovered that we did not know. So my concern, and it's just my concern after watching this process, is that I want to know that the MML is going to really use every tool that they have to get all the correct background information that we need to consider in choosing a city manager. That would include all newspaper articles, that would include Twitter, that would include Facebook or whatever. We, we need to know what people are thinking about these, these individuals and, and try to figure out if they're a good fit or not. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniat?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or area of city involvement. Citizens in attendance via phone shall be recognized by the city clerk for comments. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Each per, every person in the virtual, every person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. Heather, if you want to do that and then move on to officials and staff and council members, I appreciate it.
Telephone number ending in six two one zero. Do you have a comment? If so, please press star six. That was six, telephone number six two one zero, one more time. Moving on to telephone number two four seven zero. If you have a comment, press star six. Hearing none. Telephone number two four zero three. Do you have a comment? And then I have three members of the public joining us. Must be by computer, iPad. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute yourself and state your name and address. There's three of you. Okay, hearing none, going on to officials, city manager?
Nothing at this time.
City attorney?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Finance director?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Police chief?
I don't have anything, thanks.
Fire chief?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Councilmember Bachman?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Beaton?
Nothing.
Councilmember Sipsek?
Um, I just wanted to say real quick, when we go through this process and we look, like they bring up stuff on like social media, like Facebook and Twitter and stuff like that, like the stuff that they send to us, I think that we need to take it with a grain of salt because it's so easy for people to bash other people on social media. I mean, if people looked at the stuff that was said about all of us on social media before we had a job, I don't think any of us would be sitting here. Because people tend to complain easier, you know, by their anonymous letters or social media. So I think that we need to take that in consideration and not just, you know, push them off just because somebody's on a rant that they don't like that person. That's it.
Councilmember Gabowski?
Yes, I just have two things. I had a lot of questions answered by Kathy, that's why I didn't ask anything. I was satisfied there. I don't have a problem with local people applying, you know, and I don't know how they would write them into the program and interview them and whatever. But they want to apply, let them apply and we'll go from there. But I'm satisfied with the MML. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin Poniat?
I've got nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Schumansky?
Nothing at this time, Heather, thank you.
And Mayor Zalinski?
Thank you, Heather. I'd like to again thank Kathy from MML for taking time to talk to us tonight and bring us up to date on and answer all our questions. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion. I'll make the motion, Gabowski.
Is there a second?
Second, asking.
A motion, a second, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time.